All right, it's six o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order. It's six o'clock and we're gonna call downtown Townshipity Commission meeting for November twenty-sixth to order. First, we have roll call. Dave here, Jesse?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Lee?
Casey?
Here.
John?
Here.
Kevin and Excuse. You have approval of the agenda, anything to add or any changes?
Motion to approve agenda. Twenty-sixth, thousand point four.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the November fourth meeting. And then also for resolution SU twenty-four dash oh eight and resolution that SPR twenty-four dash fourteen. Steve, we can do these all at once, correct? Okay?
Motion approved. The meeting minutes for November fourth, twenty-twenty-four and the draft for resolution SU twenty-four dash zero eight. Resolution SPR four dash fourteen.
Support. Take your roll call going on that. Dave, yes? Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Casey?
Okay.
And John?
Yes.
All right. All right, next up, we have public comment and we have several things on the agenda for tonight. If you would, we also have a public comment for those. So if there's anyone that would like to make a comment at this time on anything else, we have a free dinner window here. We'll open up at six oh two. Any public comment?
It's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda tonight. All right, we have no comment, I will close it at six oh three. All right, we also have some communications that are provided here. We have the township board meeting minutes along with the planning and zoning report for October. All right, next up, we have unfinished business and this is for SU twenty-four dash oh seven and SPR twenty-four dash thirteen at twenty-two-ten White Hall Road, Berry Junction Business Park. You have someone here for that? Okay, if you'd like to step forward again and just kind of tell us, we had some findings and we could get some notice on what we found?
I have bigger picture for you here. See here to see. So first of all, the easy things, I apologize, Cheryl scales from West Shore Engineering. I did not take these two spaces off, but no problem. These are the two spaces that would be approaching, have setback to take out. What is new is you requested us to go back and look at fence. So the red line is where we looked at sight lines from the house. And that would be a hundred fifty foot long fence and then you asked for some price quotes. But you could see in your notes that the difference between the six and the eight is about three thousand dollars. So of course, we're asking for the six, but the six is reasonable. Nine-five-ten, it's a little bit taller than I am. The other thing that we've added on here is we were, we were planning in the future to have this being developed as a commercial parcel. I think it makes sense now to talk, to go back and talk to the road commission about seeing if we can get this access here. Of course, they're not going to even entertain it unless you folks are interested in allowing us to have this access one here. So that would give us some of their access right across the driveway from the current location of that driveway. So we would have this and this right now is what we're asking for, you consider. Obviously, road commission says no, that won't happen right now. That, I believe, addresses the changes and the comments that you have. Mr. Mullis here also, if you have any questions. Oh, and taking the landing off the back of the truck.
Bill, good sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions anyone has? All right, if you'd like to go ahead.
Marcy Cisneros, six-nine-eight West River. I was here last month. Looking for us to. And so I did do some of this with the wheel. I'm hanging on, I wanted to try to get a picture of this fence, so that's thirty-three foot. It's a little tricky to find, but I think it comes to about a telephone pole near my driveway. And from that point back, I think it's about a hundred and fifty feet that breaks. I passed my normal living space near the house. Give or take, I think, a little bit. And then for when it's worth another hundred and fifty feet from my backyard, so the entire length of my used space is three hundred total. And yeah, I was just curious as well, so I called them to see how they did. Quote a six foot at a hundred and fifty for forty-six hundred and I quoted an eight foot at sixty-six hundred. So they came about two thousand difference between the two. And then I don't know if you're interested, I did some pictures of that intersection with the driveway, just to kind of show. Maybe you guys can pre-put it in that, you know, kind of in my mix. This is, I printed up some picture copies out that give you a little bit of a look see. And then also you can kind of, I included a picture of the elevated housing in that my home, which extended. Obviously, I'll read a copy, copy it. Which makes my notice how it's loud, that whole comment, he probably need additional help, but it is.
Oh, that's good. All right, thank you so much.
The red line is where we are looking at. So that's about a hundred and twenty feet that we can certainly slide back. That's back, even on the back of your house.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, so the fence would start, the fence. Yeah.
Oh, I'm most concerned about the being.
So she would rather have the fence moved to the front from the road.
It's the wind, it might.
Yeah.
She believe, I mean. Yeah.
Which I guess, if they, not, I mean, at the moment, I mean, I guess it would be, that's kind of black and all the stuff that's gonna be built.
Wow, so I mean, I like the idea of this for my backyard experience and for the more recent development. Because then if the other parcel, the future parcel isn't in play right now, that's why I think I have to catch up what's being decided. Because it's that it's coming later than perhaps it's gonna be up at a later date. And that was several rationale behind the eight foot request was right next to the house. Further back and on the ground, so six feet would be sufficient back there.
So when we move that front parcel to the left, it will come back, looks like, well, it'll be. Your desire, yes, the greater.
We're just in the first picture.
Yeah.
Good to know.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
So we can do a six foot for now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Pretty well, I think questions have been pursued and I think it sounds like the six foot is the best option at this point.
I have a question. So these are storage units, am I right?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay.
No, they're commercial units, distributing plastics, film, tape.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, so.
That's we have, we need its first unit. That's what we came for special use because it really didn't kind of fit in with your definition of industrial use.
Maybe somebody that has a previous motorhome and they want to have heated. So that could come into play as well. It took more of a store.
So I think what we discussed was that if something didn't quite fit into the wall of what you're, or doesn't fit into the list of what you allow us in industrial, that use have to come back as a special use.
Yeah. I wonder why, why, why it's necessary for the developer to put up a fence, frankly. It's been zoned commercial, the homeowner must have known that. It's not like it's a factory with, I don't know, complicated process, equipment and machinery in plain sight. It looks like there's metal buildings in plain sight. I don't know, like, you know, you're asking for a boundary so you can't see your neighbor's metal buildings and I don't know. I don't think we're in the business to install fences, but.
It's a combination of, of concern, visual need one of them, security being a helper.
There's not much setback there either.
It's close proximity.
I mean, it looks to me like, is her house like right next to the property line? I mean, is this her house? Thank you so much, I didn't, I should have brought my magnifying glass. Right, so. So, yeah, there's a. So this line right here is twenty-five feet away from the property line, right here, this setback. Yeah, that's the same, that's your, in your. So kind of right along here. Okay. Fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty. Okay. For that building. How much of the woods do you anticipate having to clear to build buildings?
The first one, probably very low.
The line of trees.
Well, we're probably, we're probably building one, two, and three though, correct? Yeah, we're going to be about fifteen feet. No, ten, I'll say ten if you say. You think you can keep ten feet of trees between? And just putting a little rain sway out there. That would be the first choice, is to save my trees. Same is good.
Yeah, because I just thought.
Guess that would be a question I can draw with you, but I mean, if you're gonna put fence up, you have to put on the top of your lines. You're gonna tear more trees to put the fence up than you would.
I got the minutes, why do you have to clear trees to put fence up? Every fence of the campground is running, I mean, it's totally wood. Why, when, since when do you have to move trees? I saw that for the housing development. Why, why can't you put a fence up without moving trees, without putting trees down? Is it that thick?
Well, it's, it's a true line if you.
Well, yeah.
True line, you're gonna go to straight line.
I'm, yeah, but not very, I mean, we, we fenced a hundred and ten acre parcel, never had any problem with a, I mean, all, and it's very heavily wooded. It never ran into a tree, so I, I guess, it's only a hundred and fifty feet. Why would the goal would be to save the trees? Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a, it's a tree.
That was the subject.
It's not only the trees that provide the bucking, it's all the scrubs that, it's around the trees. We just can't. The property is right here. Mm-hmm. Some trees that we can work on and save. We're just not drawing any planes. You know. My first thought when I read about this fence and they're talking about it might be three thousand dollars more and I thought, this is all well over a million dollars. And we're talking, we're quibbling over a tiny bit for a fence? That's the way I was looking at it, is if it would help neighborly relations and they're both in agreement to put the fence up, then I don't, I don't see why it's that big a deal. It's, I mean, for the budget of the job, a tiny fence would not be much at all. And the, the thing is weird, on corner parcels, it's weird because his rear yard is actually her side yard. So setbacks get really weird when the rear setback is smaller, when it, if it was the side, it'd be a little bit bigger and.
Actually, he doesn't have a rear yard, he would have two side yards.
Okay. Well, but on the, on here, it says rear setback, which. It's a rear setback. But your rear is twenty-five and the side is twenty, so we took twenty-five. Okay, good. Especially because it is next to her house. There is a typo on here that doesn't matter at all. It says minimum lot coverage sixty percent, should be maximum lot coverage. I don't, it does not matter, but it is a typo.
Anyone have any other questions then or comments or?
Well, I'm definitely one of the first people to not want to make people do things that they're not already reporting to. One of my big things is, you know, if they're, if he's like, that is right to fill this without the friends. It's, on the other hand, you know, like, has been said that the cost here is not much, if it keeps the piece. On the other hand, I don't think it's our job to do that.
It's probably not a mechanism to share the cost, but that would be fair.
She's not one of the warehouses next door, but.
I know.
I don't know, I, I'm definitely opposed to making somebody who has to do something like this, but on the other hand. Those are real.
Well, I think the, I think Joe, I think the developer's okay with the hundred and fifty foot six foot fence, right? I mean, you're fine, he's fine with that. At the same time, I see where you're coming from and it's like, hey, if you want a fence, you put a fence up. If you want a fence, you put a fence up, I don't know, it's up to you.
Personally, I wouldn't want to take out any, on stick and rush to have a fence put up because me, the natural screening is, is better than a fence to look at. I mean, listeners can look at that fence under the back of the building. Or that's just my personal opinion, that's not, but I would rather look at that building than a fence. I don't even know what it's gonna look like. And then a tree falls on it and then it's bent over, then you gotta fix it and you gotta maintain it. The windstorm comes and, I don't know, I'm not, I'm personally not a fan of privacy fences. I just keep the nature and. Have the reloading docks back in there, let it do its, my things. We did ask to take the lights off the back of the building because we just want to shine right our house and like that. So, I mean, the office, okay, we should just get a bone on it, but I don't think we should require it, but.
I, I think that this is the hardest job of a planning commission when you're trying to blend residential with commercial right together. And you're trying to think about, you know, what do we require, what do we not require? I personally think, I agree with Jesse, I mean, the back of the buildings look nice, I don't, but fences aren't, he, I mean, he's hundred percent right. You're just, a fence that's standing up is waiting for a tree to fall on it and crush it. And it's, and yeah, privacy fences are, can be difficult to maintain and care, especially when they're in the woods. Because, you know, you're not seeing it every day and so, but, but I still know that we do have a responsibility to try to blend these two different zoning things together or these different uses together, so.
As an eight foot, uh, offering, that's where?
Six.
Six six.
Right, six foot. Oh, a six, no, six foot. Yeah. Well, you have your six foot.
I agree of what we just mentioned last. There, I reacted with some confusion at the last meeting and I, I got a chance to look at the mapping as well. My initial concern was the space next to my house. And that development is apparently not far enough along yet to have a robust discussion. And that's where I was saying, I would prefer, there's less, it's all scrub, I mean, none of it's, there's some very little meaningful trees in there. It's not consistently thick, there's lots of holes and gaps along the way, particularly when you're on the ground looking through it. And if you're, it may be a little deceiving right now because there's nothing in there. But once something gets in there, when I'm looking at, you know, twenty-five feet and then with, I think the first phase, it's a fifteen before they have to clear for, it was like a drive in the back, I'm not really talking fifteen feet. I think that's gonna change it, that will be my backyard, that's different than the initial concern and discussion about what happens.
I'm down, the next proposal is what you're, what should be another meeting, we'd have a different portion of that part.
And then I'm talking about, and like we just, he and I just discussed, it's the lights, it's the traffic, it's the activity, it's the people, it's the trash. It's the, I mean, if it's gonna be type of a, a, a standard for this area, different dynamic that happens in that space.
We can scrap the six foot fence that we're talking about now and then just deal with that portion of it when that goes to get approved. Sounds good, everybody up?
There are some trees in there that, I don't know, a fifteen foot, is my backyard intact there, but it's.
All right, we have someone that would like to make a motion. There is a suggested motion, sample motion at the bottom there.
But we're talking about that.
To take out the fence. We need to discuss the driveway?
I was just gonna ask about that, so if we do, if we do the first one here, if we approve it with, if the road commission approves it, if they deny it, do this, do they have to come back? Okay, they still just do this one and this, the second one is just not gonna get.
I would not think so, absolutely. Yeah, they wouldn't have to come back and drop off the site plan.
It would just, yeah. As a second, the secondary driveway would just drop off and then like the original. Okay, I'm trying to make sure about that, are you coming back for some of those things taken, I think? And you should also include in the motion that the fence is not required. That way they can take it off of the plan.
Everybody good?
I think that's, yeah.
Good, all right.
Make motion to approve special land use SU twenty-four dash zero seven and SPR twenty-four dash thirteen for wholesale. We're housing at twenty-two-ten White Hall Road with conditions that the fence be removed from. From the plan. With conditions that the fence is not required. The parking space be removed from within the required forty-foot front yard setback and the placement of the proposed driveway be approved by the scheme counter road commission.
Take your roll call up. Dave? Yes? Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
All right, next up, we have new business and we have SPR twenty-four dash sixteen. Twenty-eight eighty-seven industrial parkway for D and R. Come here for that, you wanna step forward and tell us a little bit about what you're doing for?
Well, Justin knows what's going on. Uh, in our, we have D and J, so we're cleaners. First one, twenty-eight eighty-seven, uh, until we fill up like here, blow it over there and just looking to expand and make another building. For, for building equipment, trailer tools, things like that. Well, you should have went bigger with the building to start with, but now we're here putting another one up, so.
The business is good, that's all right.
Anchor plane. Well, it's not a new business, I don't know if I should clarify this or not, but it's my twenty-fourth year of business, so. The only new is just building to be done. In the same location and love where I'm at.
Similar to that other building?
Check the same. I, I believe in same color.
I didn't, right, right, are you locating that to Ryerson's side?
Right, this side you have this side like that, yeah. And next to, I guess, would be Dale's, almost on the left right on the corner. Yeah, you're far as that, yeah.
On the other side, not high. You're putting this building up, yep, and Brian are going crazy over there.
And my plans are part of me, but I don't believe that there was like anything special that I'm doing there, good time to drive, break forward.
Questions?
It's a building, come on. It's nothing healthy, third and ninth, not even a new development.
Make motion to approve SPR twenty-four dash sixteen, that's pretty.
Support. Take your roll call. Dave, yes? Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, we have SPR twenty-four dash seventeen for twenty-three fifty-one Hope Road for the Brooklyn's Bagel.
Evening. Good evening, my name is Trent Dyer, we did this just back in May. When we did this originally, I have my drawings up. And what I'm looking for now is I'm looking for approval on the roof line of the canopy. And when I had done it originally, we had it only facing just the south. And as we got to it, it kind of made it look off-center, so we were looking for approvals at that same roof line, kind of faced the family fireman home property as well. Be able to fit it, put a sign in there, which the sign we've already applied to the variance. And I'm waiting for that, I wanted to speak approval. It doesn't look like it's gonna be any problem. I talked to authentic homeowners and they said they didn't have a problem with that personally, as far as how it should impact anything on anything that they do. It also crosses past with Northside Pub, but again, it shouldn't impact anything with visual sites or anything like that at all, thank you.
Can we just, can we just add this second?
Yes, I'm just, it's a east side, is what we're looking for, that roof line. Because when I came through the first time, I didn't, I had just the front, so it was kind of, it's considered a small amendment or whatever, so they were gonna let through. So when I got going to the other part, when I thought to speak and say, well, there, make sure we check, you guys just make sure, so. Out there tonight, it looks nice. We're getting there, we're getting real close, do something. I am, I'm hoping for real soon now, so assuming this, I'm kind of waiting for this to come through and then once this goes through, I've got my health inspection on Monday. Obvious, so it could be as soon as Tuesday, we can open the doors, so we're getting close. I'm hoping to get my signs in there soon, so like I said, I'm just kind of waiting on this and then, like I said, the parents kind of will go through with this as well, I think, so.
So you, you have these two both sides built like that already or no?
I do, I do at the time, so I had a little bit of a miscommunication on that and having it, and that wasn't my goal to come in here, ask for forgiveness, much as it was. So it was kind of, as it was all getting built, that was kind of, it looked funny having that sign, that facade as drove by all the time going. So that was kind of, it was just nice, I had my guy out there, we had it, we talked a little bit, so. I can't edge in the walk, I mean, I did that, but not trying to spread the joke, but.
Yes, if you'd be on the side, you'd be pulling in on that drive.
Right.
Which I guess would be nice to be able to say, and you just see that it's huge.
Right, to see that, I mean, and we'd like to do something, eventually, and that would be, I don't know, optionable there. But that's my next project, I'm gonna try to see, do some private road as far as I know. this private road as far as I know. Um, from my understanding, it's, I don't know what options are even out there, but I do believe it's owned by Mr. Daniels. And, but he hasn't been one to, one to give much with, but at the same time, I have talked with the public and family farm home as well as us, and I think we'd be willing to do something if you, if you want to wow, so, that's something that's maybe in future, because if you had drove down there, it is kind of a bumpy road, kind of thing, so it's like patched a few times. It'd be nice if it's done the right way, right, you know, you can shave off the first four or five layers and there, you know, four or five inches, or rough enough. Got it quoted out, had about eighteen grand to go from, uh, Whitehall from, yeah, one twenty there all the way to the backside of Northside Pub. A whole size, which is a pretty good deal, I think, for most parts of consideration. So, but we didn't make it this year with weight restrictions and I didn't get anywhere with Mr. Daniels yet, but hoping to push on that in spring or open there, try to get permission from him and then. Sure, I got to go to you guys, all the good stuff too, so.
All right.
What's the variance for, having two signs?
Yeah, so it's.
For peace sake.
So it's a.
Seriously? At least of this money.
Hey, hey, it's all formally, it's, it's what you know, you know, and like you said, the same kind of thing. And changing the, and when it comes to the boys of the project, everything that's said and done, to come up here and spend the next or whatever to do it, I will do it.
I stared at this forever, I couldn't even understand what we were approving that was any different.
Said you already have the signs and everything, so you're ready to go, you just have approval and.
Yes. Going pretty well, like I said, health inspection's the final thing and I'm just kind of getting pushed all this too, I have, uh, inspections all through, just, uh, my inspections say, uh, waiting on signage, basically.
And that's what's the next meeting for the zoning board of. Okay, now it starts moving clear. All right, so if we approve this now, that is pending the zoning ordinance variance. If we approve it now and that is not for some reason, I, like I said, I just don't like to put. But if for some reason that's not, then he would have to go with just the one sign then?
Yeah, the one sign at thirty-two square feet.
Okay.
I believe the variance is also for size as well.
Okay. So we can approve it for that pending, pending the approval.
Yeah, okay.
I motion to approve SPR twenty-four dash one seven. To amend SPR twenty-four dash oh six as proposed on the condition that all signage be, as permitted by zoning ordinance, unless the variance is granted by the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
All right, we'll take a roll call. Dave?
Yes, Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
You are, sir. Good luck on that meeting, may see some of us again that day too.
Michigan's adventure sign can be like seven thousand square feet, you better prove it's variance.
All right, discussion, um, item is for meeting dates, is there anything anyone sees with the meeting dates for twenty-twenty-five that has any potential issues?
Let you know that happens. I think Kevin's probably going to object a few.
Good evening. Good evening, Kevin.
Is December thirtieth an appropriate date or would that? Would you like that moved?
Does something on New Year's Eve, Eve.
It's either you go with two days before Christmas, two days before.
Most people are frantic, two days before Christmas, eventually.
You know, I'm, I'm, yeah, the thirtieth should be good.
Yeah.
Okay.
I said, talk about discussing, so in, for like a hundred years before recently, if you, a meeting was canceled for a reason or if they, if something didn't, you just went to the next month. Like plenty of things that we've done got pushed to another month because the meeting, the notice didn't go out or something. I, since we set these meeting dates so far advanced and sometimes people have, I mean, it's posted on the website and stuff, they, this is when they think they're going to be. I think that if you, if there's an error, it should just, an error in like having the newspaper, which eventually the legislature is going to phase that out. So are they working on there, taking me about that?
Because nobody reads the newspaper.
Does the Chronicle, they have three editions a week?
Yeah, two.
Oh. Yeah, that's pretty, I think the, I mean, that's got nothing to do with us, but that, it's time to move into the new millennium here and do some sort of, because then it's easier, it's so much easier to, to get out to people, but I think we should just postpone it, like if you, and we, we shouldn't, if, if the county is under a natural disaster, I think our meeting should probably be postponed. That's just my opinion, because I felt so bad for that guy, because it just said township hall was closed, it never said anything about the meeting, he was just supposed to assume it was still going, so.
On that, if I had driven up here before making that call, Jeff said it should be fine by that.
Oh.
If I had driven up.
And seen the card. Okay, good.
All right, that takes us to adjournment, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'd motion to adjourn. Give that from the support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And at six thirty-five, thank you so much.
Answer your question.
Very good, thanks, good.
No.